Good evening, Commissioner Brown. Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how about you?
Good, we are live on Facebook, just for everyone's information.
Hello, everybody.
Good evening.
All right.
Good evening.
Evening, Mayor.
Commissioner Borum, can you hear me?
Good evening, good evening.
Yes.
Okay. All right, Ms. Brown, you got your assistant with you? So we are, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Looks like we've got everything in place. At this time, we'd like to welcome everyone to the City of Palatka. June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty commission meeting. We're gonna have a pledge of allegiance and invocation by Commissioner Campbell.
If you will, I'll be in prayer. Dear heavenly Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to gather. We thank you for your grace, we thank you for your mercy. God, we ask as we go forth with this meeting, God, that we do what's right for the citizens of this great city, God. We thank you, we appreciate you, we adore you. Amen.
Amen.
Allegiance through the flag of the United States and to the Republic for
Independence under God, indivisibles with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call at this time, Commissioner Borum.
Present.
Mr. Campbell. Vice Mayor Brown is muted. She says present. Commissioner McCaskill.
Here.
All right, thank you. And Tara Hill, I'm here, all members are present, and we have a call. Move on to approval of our minutes, items A and B. Our approval of minutes from our June eleventh, two thousand twenty meeting, and also from our special call meeting on June nineteenth, two thousand twenty. Are there any, are there any items on, as it relates to the minutes that we need to have corrected?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as they are.
So the motion is written, there's a second, my Commissioner McCaskill. Is there any further discussion? Questions called, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to public comments, public comments will be, public comments will be taken, no, no, actually will be taken on items of discussion. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment. We have a virtual option which allows you to put down your comment inside of the chat room. Also, put your name and address with that so we can recognize you. Additionally, you can dial three two nine zero one hundred, area code three eight six, three two nine zero one hundred. Public comments will be limited to three minutes, no action will be taken on topics of discussion. Please govern yourselves accordingly. We're now open the floor for a public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment at this time? Again, three eight six, three two nine zero one hundred? Or inside of our YouTube chat? Do we have anybody in our YouTube chat?
There's nothing at this time, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Our phones aren't ringing as well, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We will move on to the consent agenda. We have items A through D on the consent agenda. Are there any items that you wish to have removed from the consent agenda at this time?
Uh, Mayor, I would like to let you know I'm not voting on D.
Why not? What, you think it's a conflict?
I don't know, I don't want anybody to say it is.
Let's pull item D off the consent agenda for those.
Well, y'all can vote on it, just take each.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull it, I think it's a special item, I wanna pull item D so that we can make sure we're reading it to the record properly at this time. Are there any other items besides item D? Seeing that I entertain a motion for items A through C.
Motion to sell items A, A through C.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing that all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
They took D off, come on.
Moving on to item D. Item D is a resol, is resolution number twenty dash twenty R six eight. Resolution, City of Palatka, for designating that Marina located at Riverfront Park at three nineteen River Street be known as Mary Lawson Brown Marina. Resolution reasons follows. Whereas Mary Lawson Brown was born January seventh, nineteen thirty-six, in Palatka, Butler County, Florida, the daughter Theodore R. and Mini Jane Lawson. She was named after her grandfather, after her grandmother, Mary Jane Lawson, who operated the first hospital in the state of Florida that served both African Americans and Caucasian Americans. Whereas Mary Jane Lawson Brown attended Florida A and M University and Worthing College of Mortuary Science. She then married the late Johnny Brown, and together they had three children. Theodore A- Anthony Brown, Tina Louise Brown, and Johnny Maurice Brown. Ms. Brown became a licensed funeral director in nineteen sixty and still active in the oversight of the E W Lawson's and Sons Funeral Home and Cemetery, which is a family-owned and operated business founded by her grandparents in nineteen fourteen. And whereas Ms. Brown is an inspirational person who serves as a timeless advocate for the citizens of Palatka, serving the citizens of Palatka on the City Commission for thirty-six years, from January third, nineteen eighty-four, to the present, making Ms. Brown the longest-serving commissioner ever of the City of Palatka. And whereas Ms. Brown was the first female African American City Commissioner of the City of Palatka, the first female City Commissioner of the City of Palatka, and the first female Vice Mayor of the City of Palatka. And whereas Ms. Brown has served on many boards and committees and held many offices during her career, including the Board of Directors of the Florida League of Cities since August of nineteen ninety-nine, multiple terms on the Florida League of Cities Municipal Insurance Trust, multiple term on the Florida League of Cities Executive Committee, the First Coast Workshop Workforce Development Committee, of which she also was a chair from nineteen ninety-six to nineteen ninety-nine, the Rural Development Council, the Foundation Board of Directors for her alma mater, Florida A and M University, and the Florida Black Caucus Board of Elected Officials, of which she was president in nineteen ninety-nine. Whereas Ms. Brown has during her career been awarded many honors, including being named the State of Florida City Commissioner of the Year in two thousand seven, Special Award from the Chamber of Commerce for Outstanding Service in two thousand seven, the Florida Black Caucus of Locally Elected Officials President Award in nineteen eighty-eight and ninety, the Outstanding Service as Chairman of Coordinating Council, Adult and Vocational Education Award nineteen eighty-six to eighty-seven, the Butler County Historical Society Service Award in nineteen eighty-six, the Palatka J.C.'s Distinguished Service Award for Good Government in nineteen eighty-five to eighty-six, Outstanding Service as Vice Chairman of Coordination Council, Adult and Vocational Education in nineteen eighty-four to nineteen eighty-six, the Outstanding Community Service Award from the Notch Temple Number four eighty-four in nineteen eighty-five, S E L C Martin Luther King Junior Drum Major Award in nineteen eighty-four to eighty-five, the Outstanding Citizen of Butler County from Sigma Gamma Row in nineteen eighty-four, Woman of the Year from Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated in nineteen eighty-three, Florida League of Cities, E. Harris Drew Municipal Official Lifetime Achievement Award for Dedicated Service as an Elected Official for the City of Palatka and the State of Florida in two thousand twelve. That's the highest honor that any elected official can get from the Florida League of Cities. The Florida League of Cities Home Rule Hero Award in twenty fifteen, the American Value Honor for Boy Scouts for Outstanding and Dedicated Service to Youth in twenty sixteen, induction into the Bethlehem Church Hall of Fame in twenty ten, proclamation in twenty twenty by Florida A and M University saluting her legacy, and a proclamation by Senator Keith Perry to recognize her for, for her accomplishments, dedication, and hard work, in which she was called a role model for other public servants across the state who worked every day to provide the best in municipal service to their citizens. And whereas Ms. Brown's work and service include her consistently responding to Florida League of Cities' request to reach out to members of the Florida Legislature to provide local perspective on issues and convincing state and federal legislators to appropriate funds to the City of Palatka for transportation, parks and recreation, infrastructure, historic and private housing renovation projects, tourism, economic development, specifically including efforts in Washington, DC on behalf of Say Rodden Reservoir. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Commission of the City of Palatka, Florida, that the Marina located at the Riverfront Park located at three nineteen River Street, area depicted in the attached exhibit, which is incorporated, shall here and after be known as Mary Lawson Brown Marina, to honor Ms. Brown's legacy and pay tribute to her efforts on her behalf of the City of the citizens of Palatka who are, in her own words, better together. I'll entertain a motion at this time. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Borum. There's a second by who?
Our second.
There's a second by Commissioner Campbell at this time.
Yes.
We'll open the floor for public comment. Again, public comment can be made at three eight six, three two nine zero one hundred, and also through the chat on our face, on our YouTube Live. So again, we're open for public comment. Ms. Robinson, we have any comment?
Nothing as of yet, Mayor.
At this time, I'll close public comment, I'll move on to the commission, we have any comment?
Oh, I do, Commissioner McCaskill.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Brown, I just wanna tell you that I'm honored to be able to share this moment with you on tonight. I could imagine serving on any board for thirty-six years takes a lot of hard work, dedication, and faith. It's evident that you've, you know, putting faith into work into action is a challenge, and it's evident that you've done that unwavering, with unwavering efforts. So your commitment to this community and the work that you've done are things to honor and celebrate, Vice Mayor. Not only have you proven that we're better together, but you've proven that together we can be champions. So, congratulations. You know I'm always nervous, but I wanted to be able to tell you that, and thank you for all that you've done for me personally on this, on this dais. So, congratulations.
Thank you, anyone else?
Yes, I'd like to make a statement here. I just call her my Palatka mother, but because I knew when I first came to Palatka, I got recruited to the Saint John's River Water Management District through her son Maurice Brown, and since that time, I didn't even know at that time Ms. Mayor was a commissioner, so she brought me into her house and allowed for me to stay several days until I was able to get my apartment squared away. And since that time, she had adopted me as her, as her son for the most part, so I just really wanna thank her for being the servant that she is, she is a great example of what good looks like, and her service over thirty-six years exemplified it. All of the awards that she's, she's gotten really don't spell who she is as a person. She deserves a lot more than that, and I don't think that you can look through Webster and come up with enough words that describe this, uh, this beautiful young lady. But, uh, she, she's brought so mu, so many things to our city as it relates to the riverboat. Think that was over seven hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars. The train station, she saved that train station, and there are many other things that she's done and touched, and I just wanna commend her and I thank her for being a mentor to me. And, uh, you know, hats off to her, my ha, hair off to her, and kudos, Ms. Mayor, we're gonna miss you. And just stay, stay in touch with us, 'cause we constantly need your guidance. Thank you for all you've done, and thank you all you continue to do.
I wanna say that this is a honor that is very deserving. When you think of Palatka, you think of Vice Mayor Brown and all of the work that she has put in. She has served the commission longer than I have been born, and my aunt worked on her campaign with her, so to be able to sit beside her has sentimental values because of my auntie and the work that he helped Ms. Mary do, so I'm eternally grateful that for the last five years that I've been able to sit to the right of you, and not only sit to the right of you, but walk right beside you. You've taught us so much when it comes down to this game, and as a commissioner, you've introduced us to some of the Florida's leading individuals. We see the work that you've put in, and for us to be able to give you the flowers while you are yet here makes this even more special, because a lot of times people don't get the recognition they need until they are no longer here with us, and just to see when we originally presented it to you, your facial expression, that was very priceless, and again, kudos for thirty-five years, you've worked through some of the hardest times for this city, but you didn't give up, you persevered, and you're here today to tell the story. So again, to the mother of Palatka, the queen of Palatka, we are happy that we are able to dedicate this event, this part of Palatka to you, and it forever will remain.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I'm on the commission, but at the appropriate time, I'd like to say something.
Hey, you got time now?
Mayor, I'd like to say that nineteen eighty-four, when Ms. Brown, I guess, was first elected, I was, uh, had just entered private practice, and after a stint with the state attorney's office, I had come to know Ms. Brown while I was at the state attorney's office. And I appeared before the City Commission a number of times before I began representing the city in two thousand. And from then until for the next nineteen years while I was city attorney, and, and then after becoming city manager, I think that I've come to appreciate a quality that we see in, in, in less and less in politics, in life, in business. But Ms. Brown has in, in great, in, in great quantities, and that is a good spirit. You know, there, I don't think in the entire time I've known her or seen her on the City Commission, I've ever seen Ms. Brown act in a mean-spirited fashion. Something else that I would say is that if you'll think about it, you hardly ever seen Ms. Brown campaign or act against something. It's always been for something in a positive fashion. And, and then finally, and I'll leave it at this, but if you'll, if you begin to think about it, it seems Ms. Brown is always seeking to include people, things, events, rather than being a divisive force. And in today's world, I don't know that I could pay anyone a higher compliment. So I just wanted to say that before, uh, before, before you finish off, as I'm sure you're going to.
Um, anyone else, department heads or anyone on the zone, anybody else have any comments?
Hey, Mayor, can I say something?
Uh, no. Go ahead, Ms. Cutright.
Well, I just wanna pick it back on what Commissioner Borum said. Ever since I came here, since last July, Ms. Brown has always been a wonderful, wonderful hand of help to me. She has gave me a lot of advice, she invited me to stay with her when I needed somewhere to crash. She has fed me several times and kinda messed up my diet, and just talking to people about her, I have learned that she have touched so many people in Palatka that it's outstanding, and though she's been on this board, on this commission, been a part of Palatka for thirty-some years, that is, in the, in a nutshell itself, is, is wonderful. So I just wanna say thank you for the service you have done, thank you for all the help she have gave me, and continue to feed me those wonderful cakes and, and meals, and keep me getting fatter and fatter. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Cutright as well, anyone else?
Yes. Mayor, this is Logan.
Do we, we don't have family medical leave?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Ms. Tucker.
Um, yes, just real quick, I'd just like to say how much of an honor it's been to work under the commission while Ms. Brown has been on it, and it's been truly a pleasure.
Thank you, Ms. Becker, good to have you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Brown, thank you so much for your service, and I just wanted to say thank you for welcoming me with open arms ever since day one. I appreciate it so much to see your smiling face whenever you come into City Hall, and you have always been so wonderful to me, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor Don, you would like to say something?
Mr. Yule?
Hey, I, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the, the good Vice Mayor for serving as the commission liaison for the Airport Advisory Board, uh, over an unprecedented time of, you know, uh, pri, uh, construction projects and growth, and, uh, uh, and, uh, Don hit the nail on the head, she's, she just brings people together. Uh, and I, I can't feel anything better than it's already been said, but, uh, Vice Mayor, I wanna thank you for your service to the airport, uh, and your example of how to treat people, and, and congratulations, and, uh, and your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? All right.
There's one more person.
You're not recognized, Ms. Brown?
I just want to thank on behalf of the family that's and everybody else, I just want to thank you all for sharing our mother throughout all these years. It's been a long journey, and we're really excited to get her back after thirty-six years, but we know she's not going with all the grandchildren, which is you all, she's gonna continue to help you grow and prosper, and thanks again on behalf of the family.
Might be the quickest statement that I've gotten from any female Brown in a long time. Ms. Brown, uh, I, I think that, you know, it, it's simple just to say, give you your flowers while you yet live. Uh, we appreciate you and thank you for your thirty-six years of service. You were, uh, you've been saluted by the Florida League of City, by the City of Palatka, by every entity that you've ever put your hands on. The scripture simply says that the greatest among us will be thy servants, those that are exalted will be humble, and those that are humble will be exalted. Your service speaks for itself, the works that you've done will live forever in this community, and we definitely appreciate you, and as a funeral director, we're gonna tell you that you can't cry during a living moment. And so, um, at this time, you know, we understand that there are tears of happiness as we move forward. You got a lot more work to do over these next six months, four months, and, um, we're just excited that, um, you've been a part of this. Many people in this community, I think, don't really understand the impact that you've had on Florida, and how you've represented Palatka to the other four hundred and thirteen cities throughout the Florida League of Cities. But today, we, we'd be remiss if we didn't read the resolution. We'd be remiss if we don't tell you how much we appreciate you in this community, and we don't share your accolades with the rest of this city and this county so that they'll truly understand that you are a GM in the GM city. And the floor is yours.
Well, I wanna say when I hear you get accolades, I say, thank y'all for letting me hear my obituary before I leave y'all. I said, 'cause usually you don't hear anything really good about a person until after they leave you. But first, I want to thank my family. People don't know how much they have given up so that I could do some of the stuff that I have been doing. They've walked with me every step of the way. And then I want to thank my city family. And I told them we're better together, and I intend for them to continue to do that after I'm gone. If they don't, till the day I die, they'll see me sitting in that commission room to remind them. The song said, "Let the work I've done speak for me," and I wanna thank you all for this honor.
Uh, I see some tears in here, tears of joy, just from a, a very special lady who is rarely ever frustrated, keeps her cool, and has wisdom that surpasses a lot of us. So, uh, we definitely just, we appreciate you, Ms. Brown, we love you, and this community loves you, and you're gonna be immortalized. And so, uh, again, we just thank you for everything. At this time, we're gonna go ahead and call a question. All the, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Again, we have officially named the Marina, the Mary Lawson Brown Marina, based on your work and your dedication to both the water taxi as well as your fight to make sure that the everyday citizen, the least of these, has the ability to use the city's public dock to do simple things such as shrimping or crabbing and not be pushed away. And so, when we can continue, we will continue to push forward and fight for the coming man. Next up on our agenda is appointment of the acting city clerk, I'll turn it over at this time to Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For ease and convenience, it would be helpful if we had the acting city clerk actually physically located in City Hall. Ms. Hinton has done a great service for us, but as you know, she's located at Public Works. So, until we are able to hire an actual city clerk or a full-time city clerk or regular city clerk, I'd ask that you appoint Sonny Krantz as the acting city clerk. Uh, it'll make, uh, getting papers sealed and witnessed a little bit more convenient and less cumbersome. Um, and certainly that's in no way, shape, or form a slide or criticism of the job Ms. Hinton's done, and I've expressed that to her personally. But if the commission would see fit, we'd appreciate of having Ms. Krantz appointed as, um, acting city clerk.
Mayor, Mayor, I wanted to ask, uh, to, to tell us a little about Sonny. I guess it's all right for me to go with Sonny. Um, I'd like to know a little bit, I'd like to know a little bit about about her, because I think the people need to know a little bit about her. She'll be coming in contact with the whole town and uh to know us is to love us.
Well, I guess um maybe the biggest compliment I can pay to her is that uh she's put up with me uh for about years, I guess, in a fairly uh hectic and intense environment at my law practice before she came over here. She has multiple certificates and um and many talents and skills, as you've seen if you've been around City Hall much in the last couple of weeks. Um, we including straightening out the phone system so that I I can actually retrieve voicemail now on the city's phone system. She set up Mr. Cutright's phone. I think he can actually use it now. She's gotten uh multiple computers in City Hall uh functioning well. She's she's uh extremely detail oriented, as most of you have seen. She's taken over the responsibilities of getting our agendas out now. Um, not that in the past that was not being done properly, but it was being that duty was being spread among a number of people. And and Sunny has been the focal point of that since she came over. I guess in a nutshell, she's um uh I think born and raised in in Putnam, but if not, she's been here since a small child. A product of the Putnam County School System, as I said, she has multiple uh certificates and degrees from St. John's Community College. And um uh has has always been extremely dependable and responsible um in 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 my knowledge of her for six or seven years.
Thank you.
So move.
Second.
So motion on the floor in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. And so again, we want to thank Ms. Hinton for stepping up to the plate um during the absence of the clerk. And also, we want to thank Ms. Ms. Krantz for her work. She has hit the ground rolling. She has been sprinting since she's been here, and she has tied up a lot of loose ends, and we definitely appreciate you. My calendar truly appreciates you, and uh we can just thank you, um, Sunny, and we're excited about having you be a part of the team. And so, um, again, welcome to the to Team Palaca. So again, thanks a lot. And Mr. Holmes, I think so far I've been your best hire.
And my only.
Uh, along with counsel. And so, we're gonna make sure that we need it. And so, we're we're gonna move forward at this time. We're gonna move to item four, discussion of directions from the city commission regarding the increase to the cyber insurance policy limits for the general employee pension board, the police pension board, and to name the general employees pension and police pension funds as insur- as additional insurance. And so, um, do you want to take this? You don't need to take it.
You don't want, Mr. Mayor?
All right, just so that you guys know, most of there's a couple of us that sit on the pension boards anyway. Um, there have been uh based upon regulations that were in place and counsel for our pension boards. Uh, we've been recommendations coming from all the boards to increase our policy limits um from one million to two million dollars as the aggregate, and to name the pension boards um as the additional insurers on those boards. Part of it is dealing with the cyber insurance aspects, and it's something that's recommended around the state. And so, we're trying to make sure that we have the protection in place um for both our pension, for our pension boards and plans as well as for the city as a whole. And so, it's it's a lot easier for us to spread that cost to the city to increase the policy limits on it as opposed to trying to do it through the three boards. Anything else you want to add, Mr. Holmes?
No, Mr. Mayor, uh, it's either gonna be uh an option of acquiring individual policies uh or increasing the the limits of the city's one policy and naming those two boards as additional insureds. From a from just a logistical perspective, it probably will be simpler to increase the city's one policy. The cost, I'm told, is is fairly equal uh with whichever option you choose to move forward with.
Any questions from the commission?
Well, I mean, I just I just make a comment, uh, if it's uh much simpler to just deal with the one policy and its equivalent, it doesn't make sense to go and do three uh in policies or what have you. So that's just my comment, and I uh thanks for the direction on that.
You've got some nods in your favor on that. I'll entertain a motion unless there's some more comments.
Was it just for discussion? I thought it was, is it for discussion or we voting on?
Discussion and direction.
Okay, well, uh, so move.
Second.
So motion on the floor in a second to increase the city's policy to two million for the pension boards and name them as additional insureds. The second sound like it came from Commissioner McCaskill. Um, so if there's any further discussion.
Question.
Your questions call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So motion carries unanimously. Moving on, city manager and administrator reports, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things quickly. Um, any of you coming to City Hall will note that we've employed a a a couple of additional COVID precautions at the suggestion of the EOC uh and Health Department. We now have a podium that you'll be asked to sign if you come into City Hall, and there's a thermometer on the podium, uh, a touchless thermometer, which you'll be asked to use to take your temperature. Um, uh, all of our departments, all of the city departments have a similar process in place along with a uh questionnaire which you complete each day uh indicating whether or not you're ill or not feeling well, or you've been exposed to anyone who is ill or you know has been exposed to COVID in the immediate past. That is a precaution, as I said, that was suggested by the EOC and the Health Department based upon the uh numbers that we're seeing out of Putnam and the rise in the in the COVID infections. Two, uh, will there be a discussion tomorrow, uh, have an initial discussion with the county, its team, as well as representatives of all the municipalities in the county regarding um potential use and allocation of some of the CARES funds that Putnam County was allocated. Uh, it's a it's a preliminary discussion tomorrow just to sort of set some ground rules and some frameworks and some and some communication channels to uh as we begin to work through this process of trying to um to determine whether or not and how much of the individual municipalities might qualify for by way of reimbursement for COVID-related expenses. I'm sure there'll be many more of those uh discussions before uh before we we conclude uh the process of applying for and or seeking the CARES fundings. The last I have, and the mayor may want to discuss the CARES funding more, so I won't. He may also want to discuss the COVID issues more, so I won't delve into that in greater detail, other than to let you know that we are pursuing those avenues. Um, particularly the CARES funding avenues, and we are conferring with our county partners. The funds, as you know, go to the county. The county is then encouraged to to share with the municipalities. And um and that process of meeting and discussing and attempting to determine eligible expenses is in progress. I'll let the mayor uh expound on that if he wishes, but I wanted the whole commission to know that that process is happening. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention a sort of a public service announcement. Our police department has been getting a number of calls, complaints regarding fireworks. Um, if you have the the city of Palaca Police Department uh Facebook page uh available to you, you may note that an announcement was placed on that page today. Because we're spending quite a bit of time, they are spending quite a bit of time answering calls, complaints, noise complaints and otherwise from citizens. Uh, we know Independence Day is uh is approaching, July four, but the fireworks have already begun. And we just wanted to try to remind people that uh technically, under Florida law, uh, most fireworks, what we think of as fireworks, are are not lawful to explode or to utilize. It's actually a first degree misdemeanor. There are some exceptions, but they're the nature of sparklers and and things of that nature, rather than the 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 heavy uh cherry bombs and firecrackers are 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 not considered to be lawful fireworks in the state of Florida right now. The the city is answering these calls and I we we won't, we'd love to have voluntary compliance. Remember, you are disturbing your neighbors, especially if it's if these are set off late in the in the evening. Some people have special sensitivities to sound as well as to animals. And so, we're getting a a large number of complaints, and quite frankly, spending a fair amount of time answering those complaints, and we're asking for some voluntary compliance out of our citizens and in not in not uh uh exploding those fireworks or utilizing those fireworks so that we can save our our least time for for things that may be more serious. If voluntary compliance requests are are not heated, then we will be forced to look at some citations, which we not interested in doing. We just, we'd love to see the the problem resolve itself, but we have no choice but to respond to the complaints of citizens. So with that, uh, and this in case, unless any of you want to follow up with that, then I'll leave it at that, and I have nothing further. I think you're still muted, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Um, so thank you again, Mr. Holmes, for that. Um, also moving into the, I I just recently signed a new executive order, the extension of the executive order, uh, emergency order as it relates to what we have in place um with COVID, and I'm gonna go ahead and let this, I'll let counsel go ahead and kind of give us an synopsis of what's there, and I'll follow up from there.
We drafted a new executive order where it's strongly encouraged that our citizens and all employees wear um face masking. Um, we also um extended um the restrictions for gathering and social distance, you know, to implement those, and that is going to be in place until it is terminated. Um, the effective date was June the twenty second, and I think that we're looking to have that extended until, you know, the foreseeable future.
And and just for the public, um, we're we're looking for everyone to to have face covering. Uh, we're re- we're strongly recommending that the face covering be cloth, uh, be cloth mask or or any other mask, such as surgical mask, or N ninety fives, or the KN ninety fives, which are in short supply, um, so that you can cover your mouth and your nose. What we're finding is there are a lot of citizens who are in grocery stores, hardware stores, um, in other retail establishments as well as restaurants, and they are not taking the necessary precautions. Our numbers have gone up. State of Florida had fifty five hundred cases yesterday. Um, we are greatly surpassing what's in place. We're urging also that our retail establishments and our businesses provide some type of sanitizer um as well as wipes when necessary to do with points of contact, um, whether it's in restrooms or at tables and things of that nature. So we want to ramp up uh where we are as a community. Uh, and then also, we've had conversations with Chief Grimes as well um about the possibility of us actually being able to push out in the near future and provide citizens with some type of masking, which will kind of kickstart the ability for folks to be able to move forward. Florida by far does not does not have a flat curve, and we are seeing the numbers continually escalate. You know, the last meeting, we were talking about seventeen hundred cases. Um, and then we talked about thirty nine hundred cases being the number. We're now in excess of fifty five hundred cases, and Putnam County had its largest day accounted for thus far. And this is without the numbers from the five hundred and fifty seven people who were tested before. And so, we are just trying to take whatever necessary steps we can to ensure that we protect our citizens. Anyone, any comments from the commission?
So that that does mean that this is for the general public to make sure that they they're wearing masks, whether they're uh in the public spaces, restaurants, stores, whatever it may be. Uh, and if they're outside, if they're not within the social distance um spacing, they need to have on masks.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I want to double check that because I I do know I've had some people ask, you know, ask about, you know, pushing that a little bit. Um, pushing that a little bit harder in terms of enforcing the the uh face mask at least. Uh, the other thing was, as a piggyback off of that, there was some uh, I guess, restaurants and events, people were saying that uh when restaurants, a lot of them are going over their
Fifty percent.
Yeah, and and it's hard to, it's hard to see if a restaurant or a or or establishment is over the capacity or what have you. So, you know, they'll have to police their own stuff, you know, and but there's nobody to to, uh, I guess, police that piece of it. Uh, I'm 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 guessing.
They have, um, so the state actually comes in, Commissioner. Uh, the state comes in periodically. They're checking these places along with nightclubs and other places to make sure they're in compliance. They do random drop-ins, and if and in some instances, we've actually seen people have their licenses suspended based upon violations of of those policies.
Right. Is there a number that somebody, you know, just say for instance, I I I just spoke with a person yesterday, and they was uh really, really concerned about it, and I know Jacksonville had something that they flashed where they uh have a number to call if there were some instances of people uh violating those uh orders.
So they can call the Bureau of Professional Regulations, the Florida Bureau of Professional Regulations, or they can make the report directly to uh the EOC at three two nine one nine zero four. That's the hotline number, and they can direct them as to where they need to be.
But it was like after hours too, just say, okay, no problem with that.
Hot, the hotline's open twenty-four hours.
Okay, and then the events, uh, people were having, um, still having events, uh, things of that nature. Uh, and they were, some of them are over over the allocation, like at night, you know, at night, and if if it's a twenty-four hours, I think that would cover that too. But we just gotta know to, I guess, communicate the number that people need to call in order to be able to get the uh get get some, um, I guess, ru- resolve for the issue.
Yes, sir, and Chief Shaw's been on that as well. We definitely appreciate that. Any other comments or questions as it relates to COVID?
I'd like to say that we need to remember that people in the healthcare field have given of their lives, you might as well say, to try to help others. And we ought to thank enough of them to try to help ourselves so that they are not overburdened or put in armed way to do it. And we need to remember, it used to be sixty-five and older. The youngest people, the other, the the age now is thirty-five.
Correct.
It's not missing anybody. Anybody can go. And you need to be aware that if you wear your mask, you don't give off anything, but nothing gets to you either. Please wear your mask.
Forty-seven percent of all our cases are under the age of thirty-five, and twenty percent of our cases under the age of eighteen. So, again, thank you. Next up. Also, I just got a message that the Palaca Art League is giving away free masks on the porch of the Tillman House, located just across the street from the city dock. The gray and red three-story building across the street from the city dock, the Palaca Art League is giving away free masks.
Did they say any particular hours?
Monday from one to three. So for those of you, you can look in the chat, you'll see it as well. And can we just put that in the chat? Um, the address for the Tillman House, Ms. Robinson, in the chat, so anyone who wants to see it on YouTube Live can go back and look at that as well. So we have that information. Um, next up, Mr. Yule, do you have anything for me?
Sir, just one little uh line of correction to an article that appeared in the uh newspaper today. Uh, disappointingly on the back page, I might say, Palacade News if you're listening in. But there was a bit, there was a uh mention of what we're doing with the uh remainder of the tower, the rotating beacon tower that uh we recently took down. The plans are to put it in the in pla- uh a new entrance that we are planning in the in the future. Uh, not to uh move it to a new location when we uh uh move the office. Uh, the uh, I don't want anybody to think we're uh planning any new offices out here, but we are looking forward to uh relocating the main entrance to a safer location uh just east of where the present entrance is. But uh, an article said the the tower will be used when we relocate the office. That that that's not correct. It's uh the new entrance, so just want to uh straighten that out a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Brunt?
Good evening. Thank you. Um, had a meeting this, well, matter of fact, today I've met with uh Chief Lanier from Putnam County. We're looking at putting on a Fire One class here in the next month or so for some interested uh high school graduates or people who are looking for a career. Um, it's gonna give them away that Mr. Holmes has made some contacts out there with us, uh, or maybe possibly getting a class here. So we are moving forward with our recruiting efforts to try to get some uh local participants into um into our um. So we are moving forward with our recruiting efforts to try to get some, uh, local participants into, um, into our, um, departments. Um, so we're working on that this week. Um, I just want to let the public know, I mean, I know there's been three or four people today that has even said it, but the COVID is real. I mean, we're running into it every day. I mean, I checked my CAD and you're seeing more and more just COVID positive patients where we're running into every day. Um, the, the four of our, four of our employees that were, um, just, nobody's come back positive, but just in isolation from direct. Um, so just make sure that we're just keeping ourselves and taking care of what we need to out there, um, on the streets. Other than that, it's been a, a pretty decent week. Um, I do have one employee that I found out just a minute ago that's in the hospital. So just thinking about him, uh, keep him on top of your mind. He had a, uh, health condition that just popped up out of nowhere. So he is, um, in Flagler Hospital, but, um, somebody wants to reach out to him, I'll tell you more about it off the air, but, uh, keep you guys up. Matter of fact, I'm texting with him now, so.
Chief, can you share the numbers for today as well?
Uh, yeah. Hold on just one second. That's the employee calling me, I'm sorry. Uh, today's numbers, uh, from the Department of Health. We got ten more positive cases today. Um, brings the county to two hundred and seventy-one people. Um, to Ms. Brown's, um, comment just a second ago, uh, the median age for, uh, COVID positivity is age forty. This was, I think, the, the big test last Friday. It's, uh, four hundred and ninety-six people were tested in Putnam County, according to this one today. Uh, we had an additional, this is statewide additional two hundred and one people hospitalized and another, uh, forty-six fatalities to date inside the state of Florida. Uh, but also there was five thousand and four new cases confirmed today across the state. So, uh, we're seeing numbers over five thousand from, uh, I think it's three days in a row if I'm not mistaken. So it's moving quick. So that was about, uh, that's all I had, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just think one thing off of that chief is we got to understand that it's not the increase in testing that's increasing the cases. It's the incre- it's the, it's the relaxed activities that are going on in Florida. So even four hundred and ninety-six cases, we're still seeing those numbers go, tests, we've seen those numbers go up. We had five hundred and fifty-seven people tested. Um, roughly thirteen positives out of that, but we're seeing the positivity rate go up because we're seeing more clusters of people who are, 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 are becoming positive, and we can start to almost hand-deliver where those cases are based upon the people that are coming in contact with folks that are positive. Because the positive individuals are moving around and coming in contact with other folks as opposed to isolating. So don't say that the cases are going up because of the testing. The cases are going up because we're getting greater clusters of people. And we've got clusters that go in excess of twenty-five people just from one contact. And so we just got to make sure that we do everything we can on our end. I appreciate that, that report, chief.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was also going to mention, uh, yesterday during our, uh, municipal briefing, they asked for, um, because we also need to be thinking about the people that have worked the E O C, uh, on this report. This is day one hundred and two that, uh, COVID has been present, you know, that we've been working these missions a hundred and two days. And they asked yesterday for some, for some help from our local municipalities. And I, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Holmes, I also spoke with Mr., uh, Administrator Suggs, and I'm, I'm going to work Saturday and Sunday in the E O C to give those guys that have been there for so long, uh, an opportunity. I'm going to go there, do some contact tracing to try to help them and give them a day off. So I'm going to do that when I get off of here at five, I'm going to go there till they close, and then also help them with some sanitation. I'm going to work Saturday and Sunday in the E O C just to give them a break.
And we'll definitely make sure we get some other folks in place to do some mutual aid as well. Chief Shaw? Chief Shaw, are you on the line? You're muted. We'll come back to Chief Shaw. Dean Mims, I see you're unmuted.
Mayor?
Alright, chief.
Sorry, I'm, I've been getting lag. I'm on the phone and my service is not that great. Uh, just wanted to say a couple of things. I missed the opportunity to say thank you to Ms. Brown. Uh, and congratulations for, uh, the name being named, uh, the Marina being named after her. Uh, she's been something, uh, uh, incredible to me, coming on here at Palaca. Uh, she promised her mother she'd look after me, and she's done just that. So like everyone else has said, she's a mother to everyone in Palaca, and she's been the, a mother to those who have relocated to Palaca. As far as the police department, Don has covered, uh, the portion of fireworks that are needed to do, and, uh, J R has covered, uh, the issues for COVID. So other than that, I have nothing.
Great. Thank you, chief. Dean Mims. Mr. Mims, you have anything? Seeing the recreation?
Thanks, Sonny. Sonny just said Dean Mims doesn't have a microphone, man. I'm sorry.
Okay. This is good. Thank you.
Recreation, we have that report right now. We're just standing fast and trying to stay safe and here to help the city any way we need, any way they need us. And I also talked to Mr. Holmes about, in the next couple of weeks, we're going to volunteer some of my staff to go help offset some of those hours with E O C itself.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Ms. Robinson?
No, sir. Actually, Mr. Holmes covered, um, the COVID piece, uh, and I just want to say thank you to Ms. Mary Brown. She knows what she means to me and my family. Um, can't wait to see what's going to happen with her in the next couple of years that we've got with her, when she can actually do some things outside of telling us what to do.
Thank you.
Good luck on that. Okay, um, we have, uh, Ms. Tucker, you're in for Mr. Griffith?
Yes, sir. Um, uh, the only thing I've really got is, uh, we received notification from USDA that the grant we wrote for a market analysis, the feasibility study for the business incubator, and a planning document to look at, um, Central Academy's building has been approved, and we'll be getting that award in short time.
That's great news. Um, and so just to the commission, we are actually putting together, we put together a task force, um, working closely with, um, several people in the community to look at saving the story Central Academy, uh, the first accredited black high school in the state of Florida. Um, Congressman Yoho has graciously, um, taken the, uh, in his last six months in office, he is going to make a, a valiant push to help us save Historic Central Academy and get appropriations as it relates to that project. Uh, he requested that I put together a task force, and we have, um, some local members along with partnering with the college and the housing authority and the business community. We've put together a, a team um, that's going to put a package together to deal specifically with that issue. And, uh, we are praying that we're able to save the first accredited black high school in the state of Florida and a true treasure to this community so that we can start to do business incubation, uh, workforce innovation, have a Black History Museum, as well as community center, um, and vocational education that will help us deal specifically uh, with some of the various needs that we have from the commerce side of this community. And so, uh, those are things that we're pushing, um, at this time. So, um, I want you guys to just continually, if you have any ideas or any submissions, let us know, and we can push that forward. And the feasibility grant has, is actually, uh, the catalyst to the change for that. And so we're moving forward with that idea. It's, it's been, it's not a novel idea. It's something that's been in place and in motion since nineteen eighty-eight.
Eighty-five.
But the, what, eighty-five for Save a Story, but on the register since eighty-eight. So, um, we want to move forward. We're excited. Um, also, I'm looking on the screen, Ms. Robinson, did I? Miss, we've had you. Ms. Becker?
Hi, Mayor. Um, I want to start by saying we welcomed a, our newest addition a week ago to our family, five pounds of Boss Baby.
Congratulations.
Thank you. She can't wait to become the newest s- city of Palaca employee. Um, I'm, I'm very thankful for the opportunity to telework. Um, we have, we are at the finish line of our audit. Um, and so I, we are finalizing that and, uh, in the middle neck deep of budget. So, um, just again, thankful for the opportunity to keep running while baby in tow, so.
Okay, and H R and Mr. Holmes, just to make sure she doesn't violate the family medical leave act.
So, something beyond my control, Mr. Mayor?
She's a, I can truly say right now, no one's going to argue that you're the hardest working person in the city.
Well, thank you, and I, um, and I'm in close contact with, uh, the manager and, uh, H R to make sure that we are abiding by everything we need to.
All right. Thank you. I think that's everybody. Did I miss anyone? Commissioner comments at this time? Uh, we'll start with the Marina lady, um, Ms. Brown.
Congratulations to Logan. And you got her for life, Logan. We're very happy for you. Tell her she got another grandma.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to, to say and put in the record that I would really like to see this commission after I'm gone. Uh, if it doesn't happen until then, do that business incubator. If we teach people how to start and handle and work their own business, they can take care of themselves and our town will prosper. Uh, I will be looking at you all, and I know you all will be looking at me because that's something I think that can help everybody, no matter who. We've got people with tons of talent, but they just don't know how to put it together, and we can be a moving force into helping somebody have a better life for them and their families. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Bishop Borum?
Um, my comment would be for the, um, dealing with some things as, as it relates to quality of life. Uh, had a number of people been dealing with for the past few years and been pushing things through, trying to work with, um, code enforcement, among other things, as well as, uh, NOAA's ordinance. Uh, I, I've spoken with our city manager, uh, about a, a couple of things. We, we, we looked at section thirty of the charter, and, uh, the quality of life is just being impacted by so many people across the city. And I'm just going to give, uh, some different locations about the city, so you can pretty much see the widespread. And I think we just need to band, uh, put our heads together to figure out what we can possibly do to, uh, help these individuals. And we have people who are constantly repeating, uh, issues over and over as it relates to, uh, loud music, vulgar music, disrespectful, um, things that they're doing, uh, that's impacting the quality of life for people who are, you know, just trying to, trying to live their life and, uh, and be, and be happy and have a quality of life. They can't lit, sit down and, uh, have a, a, a peaceful dinner. Uh, they can't sit, uh, you know, at night they have, uh, music played, uh, very loud, well above the decibel level that they're supposed to be doing. Um, so they've getting a number of different calls that goes into the police department or the chef department. And a lot of times, uh, the individuals who call in does not have anything that they could go on to say, okay, well, hey, uh, I've called into the city of Palaca, I called the chef department, uh, I don't have a, uh, a follow-up work order number or anything of that nature to be able to pull back. So I know there's a number of calls that went in. I've made calls. I take notes of who I speak with or what have you, and I've given out forms to the people that I've been speaking with, but here's a few, a few things that I've been, uh, tasked with over the past several years and months. Um, there's a number of elderly people being a- affected a- across the city over in the, uh, second country area, Mary Lane and Oak Street. Uh, we had another individual over, um, and I guess, uh, what's his name, Napoleon and Eighteenth Street. Uh, we, I mean, these are spread out all over the city. We got, um, Eleventh Street. We had an individual who had, uh, a cochlear implant, uh, installed in, you know, as, um, in, 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 that's very, very sensitive to noise. And in my understanding, these people had approached the individuals, uh, and it, I think it escalated into just a domestic dispute. And so we needed, I think, put our heads together to figure out what can we do to make sure that our, our citizens, uh, can be able to live the quality of life that, that they deserve. Uh, in, you know, whenever they call out an officer or whatever, it may be, sometime the officer might not get there in time enough when, uh, the, the, uh, the NOAA's might be turned down or what have you, but we have repeat issues. And if we can look in our database or anything along that line to see where people have repeat issues, again, like Catherine Street, I've had a number of calls for that area over there. And I know the city manager is working on some things along those lines. So I just would like to get the support of the commission and the city manager and the police department to figure out, put our heads together to see what we can do to assist, uh, the great needs of the city, uh, of Palaca and help restore some of the quality of life.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Any comments?
Um, you know, I just want to, um, congratulate the newest, uh, member of our city of Palaca, the princess, of Ms. Logan Becker. I just want to welcome her. I know she's going to probably be training her to take her, take her replace. Uh, so we want to welcome her, and I thank her for the newest addition to the city. Um, and, uh, that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Borum. Commissioner McCaskill?
Okay, congratulations to Logan's new bundle, Joy. I can't wait to hold her, Logan. I've been liking her little pics on Facebook, so congratulations. And also congratulations to Mike Vice Mayor Brown again. Well deserved. That's all. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Uh, yes, sir. Just real briefly, um, congratulations, Logan. I can't wait to personally meet the little, uh, princess. Also, um, once again, congratulations, Vice Mayor. But I do want to encourage the citizens once again to take this COVID, um, situation very serious. And I'm encouraging all of the commission, not to say that you have not been doing so, but let's continue to use our platforms, uh, to encourage citizens, uh, to do the right. And of course, we lead by example. So when we are out, let's first, um, ourselves, uh, do what we have to do to make sure that when people see us, they see us doing the correct thing and the right thing. Um, as people do look at us and people do, uh, talk, so I want to make sure that we lead by example when we are out in a community. Um, so outside of that, Mayor, uh, that's pretty much it. Everyone stay safe as possible. Again, take this, uh, Co- uh, COVID very, very seriously because one thing we don't want to do is continue to see the numbers rise in a small community like ours. Also, anything that I can do at the E O C to offset numbers, I don't know if there is anything that I can do, but I'm willing to put myself out there to, um, to be available to relieve some of the individuals that have been there, um, throughout this entire time.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner?
No, sir.
Okay. As we close, um, I just want to make sure that everybody, uh, just keep my family in prayer as well. We've got a large number of citizens who've tested positive. Um, it has truly affected my family as well over this last week, uh, very eye-opening individuals who have taken significant precautions to, um, to be socially distant. I've got a brother in the hospital, and I've got a whole fam- my sister's entire family sick. Um, but continue to be prayerful. Uh, there are individuals all around this community that continually test positive. We got young folks who are testing positive. Um, they're asymptomatic, but they're still showing, uh, but they're still showing positive. So we got to be conscious about what goes on with COVID. Aside from that, I, I think the other thing that we really have to be conscious of right now, within this community, our county commission is going to be tasked uh, with a very, um, difficult vote in their own right because it's a divide within this community. And we need to make sure that every citizen within the sound of my voice and every commissioner within the sound of my voice, that you reach out to your county commissioners and you let them know what your thoughts are as it relates to the issues that they have before them. Particularly dealing with the request pertaining to, uh, the Confederate soldier in the middle of the courthouse steps, and also, um, as relates to the fate of the Mount B O. So have your opinions be heard by your commissioners on this issue. Um, I've expressed my positions on this. At the end of the day, I think the most important thing for, for all of us is to get past a point where we have, um, signs of hurt in our community that divide our community, and that we where we have, um, signs of hurt in our community that divide our community and that we no longer allow inanimate objects to divide people, that people begin to unify at a time when this country and this world um, stands in the middle of a pandemic. And so we have to have more empathy and understanding more than anything else in order to unify our communities. Uh, our history is a great history. I think the city of Palaca holds the key to being able to preserve, um, to preserve history and to provide, um, an option for unrest in this community. Um, we have several historic places um, that will benefit all in their own perspectives as it relates to the issues before us. But more than anything else, I think this is a perfect opportunity for us all to reach out within our circles, our social circles and find those diverse people within our circle and start to have conversations so that we can start to understand what positions are and what thought processes are. We don't need workshops because we see workshops every day and everything that we do. But what we need is understanding and empathy and community and unity. And so those words need to more, be more than just rhyme and rhetoric or lip service. It needs to be real. Because at the end of the day, um, I'm gonna continually hurt when I see relics of slavery because my ancestors can't be traced continually to no uncertain point. Other folks may see heritage because their ancestors died on the war ground. But hurt and heritage should no way be put in the same place. They need to be separated. And only thing we need to find in certain places within our community is a unified voice, one that speaks of justice and equality. And so those are my comments for today. I want this community as a whole to not deal with keyboard cowboys who want to talk about injuries and hurting and killing and hate and all these other things. And they begin to bait and debate people, but we need to all band together and do just what Ms. Brown has done for thirty six years. Continually tell us that we're better together. And so we don't need to have any more eighteen sixty five conversations in twenty twenty. We need to be talking about how we can re-shine the gem of the St. John's River and move this community forward. Because the all-white Palaca didn't work, the all-black Palaca is not gonna work. It has to be a Palaca made up of Palaca people for a Palaca purpose. And that purpose has to be to love that neighbor as thyself and move this community forward. Those are my words, my messages, and we can move forward at this point. And if there's nothing else before the commission will stand adjourned. At this time, we will stand adjourned. And again, we want to thank you all and congratulations again to Logan and Ms. Brown.